Anambra Muono, Anambra Zwono, Anambra Kachano. Mr. Chairman. Yigboine, Yigboine, Yigboina, Yigboina. None, and thank you very much. Distinguished Senators, Members of the House of Reps, oh, former Deputy Governor, Members of the House of Reps, former and current, Oh, Amane Tieti, former Governor of Anambra State. Former Governor of Anambra State. Bana, Bana Pointi, Ife Uzwa. Nele Anyanam, Aga Asedama, Mi Bana, Ki Bana. He began the road revolution in Anambra. Bo. Tata, Akade, Fuli Tomaka. Akade, Bo, Ogem, Malo, Oh, Ogem, Bido Selen. As Governor, Ogem, One Senad. And Bishop, while delivering his homily. So, Vife Koyom. Asimbi Kom. Nakwa Na, Chonde Gaaloi Lo, Baifa. Ya Choba, Ode An Gige, Juwelo, Si Jere Choba, Oden Kenya. So, I just want to give this testimony. Thank you very much, Your Excellency. Um, Ndiguwe Nine, Bialeba? None. Nde Anambra Nine? Oh, Nyoba, Naba, Nima Na, Anambra, Omoronya, Naza Two, Oh, Nyoba, Nawa, Number One. So, Ebo, Nyoba, Nana, Iguwi, Antu, Ni, Ni, Iguwi, Beno. Come on, Yeye, Kona, Ju, 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 Iguwe, Biya. None. Kaye, Neselefa, and Ghem, Our Chairman, Unti. Of course, Ekusi, Ifa, Nine, Nchefu, My Wife. The Wife of the Governor of Anambra State. Nne, Otherwise, um, uh, Ena, Analuwa, Naba, Tiga, Po, Anilo, Ima Na, Gaga. Nke, Nemo. Ekene? Father, Vele, Anang, Kueseli, Make A Presentation. Ogayime, One Year Anniversary. I'm Well, A Presentation. This is the month of, um, July. Makon, Malonya, Neku, Neku, The Last Eighteen Months. Inabaka, Ya, Nago, Eighteen, No, Luka, Lubra, Kwa. Akabu, Kwa, Na, Sixteen, Kaika, No, Bo. Uh, Ha, Aman, Na, Na, Yele, Lubra, Eighteen Months. Nakabu, Sixteen. Oh, Non, Anu, Even, Neku, Nazo? Okay. Okay. Oh, Non, Adolai? Uh, Ha. Obulu? Karap, Ijave, Ikeneve, Nuku, Apuku, My Sister. Um, Distinguished Senator, Ekunife, and All. Ifa. They not just is a co-opted, Anambra, um, Man, Prof. Sosito Bu. Prof., Ona, Amasupia? Uh, Ha, Uh, Ha, But, No. No, Non, Anambra, Isuke. Uh, Anambra, And Our Co-opted, uh, Members. Ema, Some Of Us, Who grew. Central State. And At The Zane, Ke, Wa. Sometimes. Can Be. Ayame, Idi, Dono. She, Efo. Na Lagos. Ogayime, Enke Lagos. It was quite a very long one. I no, Gideleba, Onak, Almost Midnight. I wear. 3:00 AM. Mana, Ige, Biya, Ichafu, Ichafu. Nke. Nka. Man, Obu, Onu, Odeya. Abuja. Nke, Isizi, Ime, Le. Security Trust Fund Meeting, For Fund Re. Ogay. Eh, Wa. Nde, Anambra. Now. I beg to. Onu, Wa, Me, Interview. And graciously employed me, and my Deputy, To be the Chief Servant. Where, See, Anytime, I meet, Kwa, Nga, Ne, Ke, Ne, Kwa, Nono, For Employing Us. Thank you very much. Nke. This. Nne, Biya. I, No, No. Kedundena, Kuifa. Ga, Ga, Kusefa, Kamagmafa, Kamagmafa, Kuta, Ya, Jafe, Ego. Uh, I, Na, Na, Obul, Go To One Minute, Kavakula. Wa, Iwo, Di, Ba, Ibe, Al, Bo. Uh, Ha. So. This. Ime, Le, Na Lagos. When, Eh, Me, Gu, Ipo, Le. Makoga. And The Purpose, They Two. Nke, Mbo, Bonai. I, No, Eight Twelve. Look, I, Se, Eh, Me. Call. When, Whatever. That's Number One, Purpose. No. Boy, Idi, We. No. Mwona. Nonai. Idi. Na. Makano. Ofun. No, Anai. With Them, Na Nigeria. Ifa, Where, Stronger. Nigeria. Ekunye, Mniya, Inekuanya, Manisimo, Manifei. Oh, Eagle, Oh, Ife, Aden, Are The Nigeria's Coat Of Arms. That I can write a whole lot about the Eagle, Eagle Personality, And All Of That. But Eagle Was Symbol, Ifa, Coat Of Arms. Eagle, Africanism. So, Eh, In Nigeria, He, Liquid. Oh. Ekunye. Yeah. Oh, San, Deba. Ne, Pa, Wuna, Boom, Ebino, Na. Mana, Ala Wu. Ala Wu. On. Mana, Ena, Chi, Kowalon, Deba, Ine, Loten, Deba, Ino, Biyali, De Mwona. Makana, Ndibina, Befa, Will Never, You Are Ghost, Will Never Respect You. Mobo, Ningwero, A Liveable And Prosperous Homeland. Ona, Anya, No, Wore, Ebesi. Ifa, So, You, Wa, Say, Nah, Bay. Makano. Non, Anu. So, No, Anya, Ke, Oji, Adema, I, No, Gide, Ano, Kue. Dekuwa. No, Wale, Ebasi. Not. Bitu. Now, The Jews. Why They Claim To Be The African Jews? Or, Ya, Go To. Mwe, Biniya, Kojolo, Omoya, Ubolo, Ne, Ki, Fe, Ge, Eh, Me, Ono. Ona, Wewa, Malife. Ofu, Kesiya, Ofu, Ubolo. Cause, Osia, Ibo, Le, Boa. Cause, Osia, Ubolo, Eto. Also. So, They, Ah, Kedu. Oh, Where, Seva, Ona, Eku, De, Na, Come, Ona, Ato, Si, Nankem, Malondio. Mana, Enwa. Mwolo. After. Ogay, Sofa, The Volocaust. The Persecution Of The Jews. Actually. After. To Build. That Will Be As Prosperous As Any. In The. Other. Ifa. Like. After, Na, Fa, 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 So, You, Anam, Them. Bo. Na. Them. Nde. Na. The Jew. Wait, Onai, Semi Desert. To Become One Of The Most Prosperous Spots Of Anywhere Else In The World Today. Ote, Kli, Determination. Ote, Kli, Resolve. Ote, Kli, Homeland Consciousness. That A People Decide To Take Their Destiny In Their Hands. Where Decide There. No, Anya, um, Obu, One, Eh, Di, Koka, Obu, One, Eh, Tony, Moya. Eh, Ke, One, Su, Eh, Karap, Ya, um. Ozemena. Also, No, Nyacha, Se, Mo, Shut Up, Omovi, Ya, Monu. Oh, Nyacha, Ya, Womo, Na, London, Number, See, Onede. Ya, Ya, Joy, Ya, Man, And Ne, Oh, They Know, Too, Oni, Cha. Bo. Okay? No, Nyacha, Se, Shut Up, Ya, Omovi, Ya, Omu. So. Ifa, Idi, Biata, Tabo, Nde, Ba, Eh. Like, Mwe, Biniya, Kubolo. Ogem, Ba, Eh. Oh, Malondi, Jew, Once, For Decide There. To Build Their Home. Any Jew, Ifa, So, You, Were Anywhere In The World, Ona, Israel. Ona, Biya. When, Na, Joon, Deba, Eh. Uboke, Dumbe, Nde, Ba, Ge, Kunie. Walose. Apa, So, You, Wa, Eh, Anam, Them. Man, I, Get, Build, Do, Nubega. Like. Uh, Eh, Gua, Go. Oh, Nyacha, Se, Shut Up, Ya, Omovi, Ya, Omu, Ya, Afu, Ya, Na, London, Oboson. Yes. In Eh, To Nigeria, Adi. I Want To Suggest, And I Want To Say, Very Funny. Amor, Come, And, Nene, Nne, Nde, Eh, Etikoi, Salifa, Nne, Na, Na, Nde, Nne. Anam, Asu, Ya, Na, Ba, Eh, No, Bo. When, Na, Seva, Nene, Yo, Va, Iva, Na, Oh, Ki, Va, Ma, Ki, Va, Onkata, Um. Ka, Iva, Onkati, Muno. Actually. Chuku, Non, Ne, Ndiguwe. I'm, I'm Very Spiritual About This. And I'll Tell You Why. My Motivation For Applying For This Job. Na, Chuku, Non, Ne, Ndiguwe. Ebano, Mistake. Ima, Eh, Ndibu. Omera, Mistake. Ima, Eh, Ndian, Anambra. Ote, Cha, Ebene, Omera, Ya, Ya, Tanzania. Omera, Ya, Ya, Jamaican. Omera. Or, American, Or, This, Or, That. Ofu, Le, Ebene, Na. Where Decide, Of All. Eh, Ba, Ke, Ga, Pia. Mo, I, Take, Clear, Seriously. Na, The Pop. Na, Each Of. Ya, Do, Each Of Us. Bo. Ke, Di. To Leave That Place Better Than You Met It. Would, Ngu, Zini. Eh, Mera. Okay. Bo. Makam. Eh, Bosha. Ra, Na. In Eh, Ba. Oh, Ma, Ki, Wa. Obu. Nonai. So, Nozo. Bon. Eh. I've Thought About. Why They Hold. Who. Or, The Why? Ogem, Malo, This. Well, Lo, Tata. Why? And Not. Mana. Mana, The Central Message. And Na. Bonan. And That. And That Is Eh, Ba. Ke, Do. Ona. Where, Questions. Nding, Well. Or, The Kunka, For. Bo. Ekene? Eh, We, Given, Out There. So, Oh, Ya, Where, Questions, Where, Suggestions, Ogem, Me, And So On. Or, That, Where? Man, Ifa. Like I Said, Obi, Ali, De Mwona. And Oh, Nyoba, Nawa, Li, For, Ga, Eh, Me, Wu. Oh, Nyoba, Nawa, Li, For, Ga, A Lot. To Make Anambra Liveable And Prosperous. Our Mission. Bonan, Nde, Eh, Clear, Clear, Eh, Clear, Mad. I, Bon, De, Anambra. And I, Wali, Ife, Ni, No, Ge, Where. Idima, Anambra, Obulu, The Number One Destination, Rather Than Being A Departure Lounge. Now, The Message, Icho. Eh, Ifa, So. And, Na, Everybody. Man, De, Anora, Eh, Ba. Oh, Nyoba, Nawa, Li, For, Ga, Eh, Me. Our Liaison Offices, Na Lagos, And Abuja, Here. Will Be Rewalking Them. I'm Well, Liaison Office, Then, Um, Uh, Asokro. Are Supposed To Be Residents, Errandably, Out. But I, Na, Fe, Those Here, Aga, I, Robote, Liaison Office, And Residents. Mo, I, Ge, Me, Out De, Eh, Fugle, Functional Office. That Once In A While, Mo, I, Ga, Biya. Mbiya, Eh, Where, Open There. Oh, When, Nite, Chole, For Governor, Oh, When, Chole, Either One Or Two Days, Eh, Very Office, In Other Ba. Oh, Ya, Chole, For, Obia, For, Eh, Ba, Obosia. We're Going To Do It. The Same Thing, Na Lagos. I, No, De, From Time To Time, De, Eh, Where, Open There, Two Days, Not In My Bar, Chifun, Sa, Robi Office. It, Oi, From, Eh, Biya, Ayavu. The Same Thing, Because The Way. Strategic Partnerships. And I Am Glad. Na, Ogay, Chairman, Na, In Eh, Kuoku, Chairman Of This Event, Uh, Own, Yigboine, Eh, Kuoku. Okuteseli. About Strategic Partnerships. January Last Year. And When, I Think Dinner, With All The Members Of The National Assembly. Every, Chukuzo, You Were There. And, Uh, My, This Is A Distinguished Senator, Iyom, Was Also There. We Had Dinner In My House, Here, Na Abuja. And Also. Kaye, Na, Kwado. Another. I'm Proposing That Another One, Would At, We Should Be Having Similar Meetings. Literally, At Least, Maybe, Maybe, Uh, Every Quarter, Or Minimum, Uh, Three Times In A Year. And Especially As In Pre. Because, And They, I'm Repeating What I Said To The National Assembly, The Day We Met. Ifa, Mba. Ifa, Bonan, Ifa, I Would Take Two Hands To Clap. And I. Ball, Na Field. And I Also Said It To The Parties, But I Mel, inaugurate The State House Of Assembly. Political Party, You Know, The Irrelevant. Karuki, Where, So, Elections. After The Elections, We All Have One Project, Project Anambra. And There Is Only One Ball In The Field. And The Goal Of Everybody, But To Score The Goal. And, Na, For Me, People, Member, National Assembly, There Is Only One. There Is Only. And That. Now, Federal. Trillion, Or, Fifteen Trillion. Twenty Trillion, Whatever Trillion. Trillion, Other, Amapo, Obia, Na, But Trillion, Na, But Trillion. Ife, Ebo, You Are Own Concern. How? Eh, Bunata, Anambra. That Is It, That's Part Of The Strategic Partnership. And I Want. The Senators And Members, And The Members Of The House Of Reps. Let's Walk. Because We Have Only One Agenda. Onu, Wa, Biya, La, Abuja. I, Sin, Na, Akabu, Abo. Go. When, Ke. I'm. I'm. Ifa. Eh. In The Back. But. Than Moving The Emotion To Get. To Happen. And We Are Going To Walk Towards That. I Want. Um, Oh, Wery, Ro. We Have A Project On Going There. Already, As We Speak. The. Um, Eh, By. You Know, That Exists. We Just. They Go. Uh, As Well. Then. The Pipeline. I Just. I Was There. Cancel Meeting. And That. Spending Close To Twenty Billion, On Federal Roads, Na Anambra. And That Shouldn't Be. We Got To Change The Narrative. We Have To Change The Way That It Works. And I Think Working With The Members Of The National Assembly, And Especially. Makop. Other. Ndefe. Minister Of War. Those Roads. I Am. Because, Eh, Ma, Wa, Ye. Ego, Ne, Kafan, Mokwa. It's Not Appropriate. The Whole Budget. For The Entire Country. So, It Can Speak From Here To Jeriko. Na Fe, Jirego, Bu, Na Fe, Mwarego. Meanwhile, Every Then, De Mad, Ya, 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 Selena, Photo. Oh, Ya, Oh, Ya, Ke, Ke, Na, Abanozo, Aman, Ke, Oh, Federal, Na, Um, Na State. Eh, Former, Osoludo, Nozo, Ajoye. Yigboine, Na, Aden, Eh, Ba, Wa, Ke, Ne? Anabaya, Al. Makubosso, Se, Ti, Al. Uwe, Chop, Ta, Na, Anabaya, Al, Kau. Oh, Mwarong, Ta, Lo, Lo, Mwarong, Ke, Mwalo. Nki, Jijula, Ka, Ebu, Ah, Na, Wro, Back Home. And I Will Address One Or Two, Three Things. I Settle Out In Terms Of Making This State, Gobulu, The Most Liveable And Prosperous State. La, Vele, Ya, Cha. Yeah. The Ifa, Ena, Eh, Kobo. Ke, De, Twa, Ige, Sima, Anambra, Gobulu, The Destination, Rather Than A Departure Lounge. So Far. Oh, Ya, Pate, Go, Oh, Ya, Ngwetifa, Obapu, Abapu. Jabe Lagos, Or, Jaba Abuja, Or, Jabo, Obodo, Ibo. Bo. How Do We Change That Narrative? For Me, And The Government, Onu, Hayala, Ina, Anambra. We Are Determined To Change That Narrative. And We Are Putting In Everything That We Can, Walking Twenty Four Hours Every Day, To Change That Narrative. And I Want To Assure You, Over The Next Two Years Plus. Makateneo, Ifo, Onu, Hayala, Inolwa, Two Years Plus, Na, Unka. Um. About Thirty Months, Girl, Afu, Thirty Months, Eva. Uh, Okazu, Thirty Three. Okay, Thirty, Come, Play, Deleba. But Over Those Thirty Months, I Will Assure You, By Our Commitment And The Program, Iji. And Ifa, Ena, Lo, Every Day, Twenty Four By Seven, By That Thirty Eighth Month, Was So, Ogam, This Contract, I Signo, Na Wu. I Ga, Fu, Ife, De, Cha. De, Fifia, Na, Navadi. I Am, No, Choice. We Have No Excuses. Yes, Our Chairman Mentioned It. Ogay, Bata. Omwe, Ko, Obododi. Nine Of The Local Governments Were Under Siege. Literally, Completely Taken Over By The Criminals. Including My Own. Ogay, Neme, Campaign, Most Of Us Could Not Campaign Freely In The Southern Zone. Now, My Own Local Government, Was I, Me, Campaign, Eh, Bu, Fabu, And Eh, Uplu, Obia, Obosia. But I, Je, Nne, Wi, There Were More Policemen, Na The Venue, Than Nde, Biya, For Rally. Ihiala, Eh, Jero, Ni, Eh, Jeter, Was, See, Abia, Eh, Di, Fe, Bo, Was, See, Everywhere. The Same Thing, All The Local Governments In The South, Plus, Obaru. Were Completely Taken Over By These Hoodlums. But Steadily, Steadily, As Day Follows Night. My Dear Gang Masters, My Dear Leaders, And Odumo, Oduma, Ma, Okitoma, Udele, Ma, See, Amosere, And So On, And So Fort. They Are Gone, And They Are Gone For Good. They Will Not Be Able To Have That Kind Of Stronghold Again, Anywhere In Anambra. Ifa, I, Ke, Ne, When, Seva, Ifa, I, Ne, Wa, Some Kind Of, I No, Gide, One Rogue, Ifa, Is, Ifu, Of, Ever, But, Abakai, Ifa. What A Loser. But Of whom, At That Form Of Organized Form, From, Rosi, The Capacity To Do That. I Can Assure You Of That. Don't Forget One Of The Candidates, I, Na, Fazal, Electoral, The Candidate Of Labour Party, Was Kidnapped While He Was Campaigning. And He Has Not Returned. He Was A Candidate. We Were All Candidates Campaigning. And He Was On A Campaign Trip. And He Was Taken. And Nobody Saw Him Again. We've Been On The Trail For That Since I Assumed Office. But I Can Tell You. If One Thing We Now Know, Na Anambra, And Those Criminals Know It. No, Obu, Eh, Ma, Eh, Zo, La, Bu, Ici. Oh, Ke, Di, Fe, So, Ne, Imasi, Ayala. Okay, Ma. Imale, Ke, Ma, Go, Jema, Eh, Zeh, Pa, Imai, Ayala. Yeah, That's Easy. But No, Ogini, Me, Zele. Afterwards. Farmer, Go, Ne, Ibiya, Na, Anambra, Me, Ya, Imasi, Ayah, Eh, Na, Na, Silike. Ayay, Ngweter, Organizu, Ayay, Ngwategi, Nonwa. That Is It. One, Odumo, Odoo, Odumo, That Was Terrorizing, Imo, The Whole Of Allu Zone, And So On. Did They, Oh, Batala, Anambra. With His Whole Team. With Rocket Launcher, With AK47, Bukalo FIFA. Was So, Batala, Anambra, Or, The Anambra Vigilante Strike Force, That Brought Him And His Team Down, And So On. So. But We Are Going To The Next Level Now. Why, Batala, Onu, Ga, Chop, Ta, Na, Most Communities. They Have Vigilante Teams, Who Are Totally Compromised. And Taken Over By These Guys. And So. I, We Couldn't Operate With Those Ones. Because We Didn't Trust Them. So, I, Bido, Go To With The State Strike Force. Now That We Can Trust That Team Now. And Those People, Ma. Farmer. Nandia. One Day, My. One day my father mama, or Makalia ife famama. Now with that group gone, we're going to the local government. And where the next phase I get out to drill down to the communities, community vigilantes. And we are going to be strengthening this in the coming weeks and months. We are determined, the moment we put this in place, over the coming weeks. We're going to focus very aggressively on opening up Anambra and ending the city at home once and for all. We're going to end it. We're going to end it. Because what had happened, do go now, had a son, a true fee, this is a ton, a ton, then a true fee. But now, I think the reverse is becoming the case. On our infrastructure and economic transformation, quite a bit of it has been laid out here. It's a huge agenda. And number one road crisis, infrastructure crisis, okay, I better. And we promised in that number that we are going to declare a state of emergency on roads. And yes, that we have declared. And only in 301 kilometers, that didn't include the contracts that we just awarded recently. And we are still coming, and we are still coming, and we are still coming. They promise 100 kilometers extra, we're going to be doing much, much more than that. And because our target is to be able to hit at least 500 or so kilometers of road. And we've declared this and moving very massively. In all the local governments of Anambra State simultaneously. And delivering quality roads. At least, oh, eh, go see guy, not a possible yellow quality road. My corner, eh, eh, na, na, they can, can, they get. My corner, eh, eh, now the benchmark, eh, eh, good quality road, nah, nah, eh, eh. And can you get a day? But now, if I ina look at that, but I got, I not calling, can you get?
Nde na Abia si Tata, nde na sena ebaba ofyamba. Wena Abia si twenty years later, onu wa ife men. E tu akoge si de na bye. E tu akoge si mena bye. And so when I say it, I'm saying, come! Ka idoziye be chineke nyelai, ana nyebanka konyelai, ana denso. Ka idoziye, kandiozo mekene, yabanabai. In your own best interest. Omo ro ni ne menyelo? Mume oyu bu nyegue ba o? Apa anambra? E bu nyegom? Ega ta go? Aha. Alonrome benne nugu, asonyibo, amesbo, otoonyibo. Alonben in the nineties. Nenugu, neba kangebe, retire, die. And I built it as such. Enugu has remained, had remained my first primary residence in Nigeria. I'm, I must say, proudly can say, no more the first onyibo, Amoroma Konyozoo. Who held such a high-profile office as being governor of Central Bank, finish here. Abuja ebba, bu guesthouse. Bosai ka feta la, alaru ebba, usanoriaka, ena po, ena juo owo, owo levi fenchefu. Benanambra, ana gom, ena emi, ana luno, so ana lube gom. And I finish here, agama obonya, galosia governor, maybe monoma, amorozuma, oye bu mozo, momo ye bu yozo. E tu obugo mozo law governor, maybe obulu mozo webo ya. Benanlosia governor, maybe na anambra. Maybe na anambra. Because that is the place to be. That is the place to be. And I na fe idozioka, and even maloya, ifa ina luno, ifa ina loe babo, and maloya with a view, neba kangebe. Yes. So in my self-interest, for it to be what it should be. And that is the zeal I dwell in here. By the way, if empowerment and so on and so forth, I could take you through a whole lot of things we are doing. But just recently, about two, three weeks ago, we finished distributing six hundred and seventy thousand siblings, coconut and palm. And you know the economics of that? We're distributing this to about a hundred and forty thousand households. And the agenda bona, my commissioner for agriculture, a foster, is a medical doctor town farmer. Yes. It's a medical doctor who has taken on the farm, I mean agriculture, as his occupation. He's our commissioner. He has been our teacher, taught us the economics of this palm and coconut. That a poor household, umwete the five of them, ayina for this year. In the next four years, when it starts fruiting and as it's going on, we'll be making a minimum of what? About one, a minimum of one point two million at current prices, at the prices today. God knows what the prices and so on will be there. A poor household, they are four or twenty thousand, half or ten thousand today. Will earning an average of hundred thousand naira a month or so. Next year, we are going to replicate and give to each one of those people ayina, another five, to make it ten. And that will remove these hundred and forty thousand households from poverty for life. That's the kind of empowerment we are doing for the poorest of the poor. Oburi gave a five-kg bag of rice. And, aha, my brother, the governor of Abia, has just come. Uguero? No, 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 thank you very much, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much, thank you, thank you. Anambra kweno! Anambra muano! Ibo kwesweno! Aha. Gerunde nanka, onu ge chelo, onu ge jese cholo somewhere by the side, because you are blocking others. Either you come forward in front here, so you don't block, um... Don't bother, if you came with Ugwero, he is safe here. I'm his bodyguard here. Ugwero, you are welcome. Akamku siloku a moment ago. I see the National Economic Council meeting. Wena we about this town hall meeting. Wesem, we send earlier the address, that he might stop by in the course of this event. And I want to thank you immensely, Ugwero. A moment ago, omali fengku about the future of the southeast, opia? Fengku na that were the crop of governors, emwe kita na the southeast. If we collaborate together and work together in a farm that I believe that we ought to, and which, and that we must, that will change the story, the narrative of the southeast. Opia fengku ebba a moment ago. Ugumba, you are welcome. Ugwero. Ugwero, nuku Ugwero. Omo emeli elect, eh declare, eh anya wina man, achineka isan ibo man. Yes. Tana, enegida Abia, negida Abia, negida, nama ju ogini ne me? Eh? Yes? Okay, oja na, remind him, no, I'm a transition committee. Uh, my, okay, transition committee, he actually chaired, I think, the economic, uh, 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 you know, section of the transition committee. Thank you very much, Ugwero. And with you and Abia, I think, like I said, we are convinced achineka, bokana anibo man. It signals, no ge lugo. We can continue, I mean, this wandering in the wilderness. It is now time to look to the east. The sun rises from the east. Bo. Mano Abia si me, adeka uwenke men. Mano agade man. So, if I, and I want to end it this way. I am a, I am a, a budget to question and answer session. We are now acquiring, uh, we've got the data, the land banks, acquiring lands for various developments, we are now still not, not there. Ozon e kobo na, the reforms, I name it, the land registry. For such that you can now perfect your mortgages, it transfer titles within... Okay. Our target currently, each and you see of home, e menka, each and the title and so on, used to take like months, six months, one year, whatever, is now down to seven days, and our target is seventy-two hours. Our target is seventy-two hours. We are now implementing the GIS, they are computerizing the land registry, and soon you will be anywhere in the world, and will be able to access and verify and so on. Ema, because land is our number's own platinum. Land grabbing boy, big business. Bo. Mano agade. People ta, three, four persons, actually one title, not entirely. Na no. It will end. On our governance, uh, the, uh, environment, I don't want to dwell much on governance and the others, but on environment, it actually end. Here remind in their number, that our number one existential threat toward the environment, flooding and erosion. We now have a draft bill, either sent to the House of Assembly, to rescue our environment. Onyo obu na owo levi fo ge me? Afugem doctor hari ebba. Ayinona befa ne benato. Ga no gidale ebba, senam, uh, goli erosion ne pocha kalo ebanaato. Uh, ozo ke walo ebanaato no sumeni. Also, if I, vago sila ebba. Yes. Many communities are sliding. Oko, nanka, obo, uh, amo apala, ebo Abia. Well, erosion everywhere, now oba, oba kubon. Bo. Iké? Obata kogobon. Web ya poli ilona agafe. So, we are, we are not, we are not, we are not taking this very, we have been ruthless about this. Because we must rescue that city. Onisha has died, but we are going to rescue Onisha back. Today, we have opened back the waterways, back to River Niger. And now, Wangene, we reclaim the large expanse of land around Wangene. Which people had taken over and taken, oh my god, and built up everywhere in a very filthy manner. But we have opened it up back to River Niger, so that drains. Ona bo milizo, nde madna, wo se no Onisha. We entered open boy secondary school, and the only speech they met to us that day. They pleaded with us, they thanked us. That now, ayineme, what drainage is no Onisha. That three of their students died three years ago. Because it rained, flood. Three staff, young staff of UBA, were killed by flood, Onisha, two, three years ago. Fa basalolo, bayana moto one of them, kafanaziye, obuna milizo, omu rebe milinaga. And the flood everywhere, the speed and the intensity of the flood. Bu moto fa bu moto va, they got into a ditch and got drowned there. Onisha literally died. Onyo obu na lokasi fe ni ne? And because Onisha died, we died and then resurrected Nasaba. They died and resurrected Nasaba. Onyo obu na ne move utu Nasaba. I can tell you, we have it as a major project, we are going to rescue Onisha, and we are rescuing Onisha. Part of our environmental law is not just to desilk and clean up, we are rebuilding the infrastructure onisha. We're rebuilding. The towns took over the place. Now we are peeling them, we are now raising quite an army now, we are recruiting quite some, uh, dead devil security people, whom we are going to now implant from Upi Waka to Ga Junction, to Head Bridge, to down to Ochanja, and Men Market areas, all those places that this house operates, we are now going to implant and have steady teams there, to take them out any minute of the day. And meanwhile, we are rebuilding the infrastructure, the roads again. Amoroma ndema lu fegge before? When dema be fegge di? Eh? Yeah. Fegge, we are rebuilding it, the entire, uh, Zik Avenue. We're now dualizing it and making a multiple lanes up to Ochanja, to Ozoma Gana. Get passing through Ochanja, round about, Ochanja, round about, we have a waterfall. And then from Ma Street to Ochanja again, to Upi Waka. Then from there, you get into, um, Portacot Street, from Portacot Street to Misselens. Then, on Creek Road, Creek Road dualized and put up all of them with their dual carriage and with, uh, uh, streetlights and so on and so forth. Creek Road then to Silas Walks up onto the express. We are doing, we've awarded them, and by this mbamba month, you will see the difference in those places. And part of our environmental law would then compel landlords even to begin to repaint their buildings once every while. Specified. Ma ke epatana Onisha, and then some of these buildings are now sozioi. We are cleaning, we are making it green, and we will turn it back again a livable place. But when we are rescuing Onisha, we are rebuilding other places to begin to grow. Anambragade man. Abura by choice, ka u ma soraya, ma soraya, anambragade man. And the world wake up. But here is the big news, I mean, the thing, I close this way. What do you have to do? How do you contribute? Onyo obu na owo levi fo ge me? It's not everybody that can come and make investments and build factories and so on. The other day, I opened a steel mill, a steel factory. Ebefaneme, ana manufacture ropes and so on and so forth, no kuso. And it's owned predominantly by a new member of the Anambra State House of Assembly. Went to commission it. And it's ongoing. And several others are calling me, nikage jige mege, where their factories and so on and so forth. I know Kristian, who there to go the commissioner, uh, for Industries, he has a lineup of them, dinagame, where their factories and so on. One say na Abia to Anambra to invest. E cho ka, no ba you are pa eh. Guam, ena batana airport, ya bulu. Aloba ngi pa eh, provider, eh ga loe ana Anambra. One say Abia, eh, eh go se ra nam, ai forana na owo ife di Abia. One so forana ife di Abia. Don't worry, bulaba, mo ye bulu ya ba. Mano obu ra mbo se ala ya ba, nangete, na wa se na, whatever. So that is one. The land thing you needed will give your land expeditiously. Onka i ge me? Number two, for your investment. Number three, we are working very hard with EEDC. And now you know, in terms of power supply, it's a very critical, we're working on security, the next is power, we are addressing infrastructure. We're working with EEDC to ensure twenty-four-hour electricity at least to the major cities in the first instance. But now also, there is a constitutional amendment that also grants states power to license even power generating and distribution, as the case may be. Several people have indicated interest, they want to do some captive power here and captive power there. One of them was talking to me the other day, he wanted to have a meeting with EEDC in Serbia. Amalo mandebo EEDC. Adika malofa, adikuankwa chairman na ya neba, uh, chairman EEDC. Fabia, I connect them, they have a conversation. Anambra must have electricity. I'll say, we are cooking, eh me? Oh, we are cooking, omo was yo cooking. Okay. The next one, how else can you play? You can pay your taxes na Anambra, you know that? How many, how many of us nebba na obu tax for na Anambra? Yes, I can see some hands up. Very good, very, very good, very, very good. Manan di akafa linu renu, pe kalele, ndi akafa linu lenu. Ndingo zo ogini me? Eh? You can. We can discuss how this can be structured. What depend lebi claimo to be your place of residence? Because by our constitution, you have your state of origin, and you have ebemwe libo residence, what depend lebi claimo? And for those of you with their companies, you can move the head office address of your company to be Anambra. You move where the head office address to be Anambra, you can then pay your personal income tax nebba na Anambra. You can do something. Just do something. I will leave you with the thoughts, the Jews, if you want to juo owo famba, the homeland consciousness. Every day as a Jew, na juo owo, ke divi me Tata, to make the land of Israel a prosperous and livable homeland. And that man Jew do the same thing. Eba hi bi ebba, bilebe ni ne, alawo tu, ane menka, ibasuwa se ina be. Ega na juo owo every day, ke dive chukujime monye, stata. And what have I done today, to make that place livable and prosperous? What have I done today, to make that place livable and prosperous? That, to me, is a fundamental question. My one, nozi nochi chi, hold us to account. Eku mndia Anambra ofunkwa. Na every penny, unutinyela enaka. Every penny, unutinyela enaka, we will be able to show you a que body. That is a contract with the Ndeanabra. Every penny, unutinyela enaka, will show you a que body. Ayinota tanaka council, I mean, no question and answer after addressing the media. One of the questions was about, okay, ke dive governance nebba to reduce the cost of governance. So, well, we are not legislating for everybody, because we agreed, not important for us to address the cost of governance. But the example, yeah, Fabo, say, for my own, I, I can talk about my own. I can talk about mine. We'll start off, na shune yu unke men, na Anambra monke men Abia. Efengke neyi, bonam Abia, mine ne create a job na, na the acquit community. Um, omu wa ya acquit, ofana ma acquaneyi. Hand woven. Because that's the only textile on the southeast, all the textiles are down. Motu nanya, the official ka governor, bogene, eh nosem. Eh nosem. Oburonge, this Ndeanabra, like three hundred and something million, this and that. Go away, no se, mua, beliba, mbo liya na baile, obulu point A to point B. If we don't say here we are, nobody will say there you are. I've traveled quite a bit around the world. From where any of the countries, see the developed, e ge je, the government ebba, oje to buy vehicles for this and that, obula American government, oje ne go Toyota, monego, uh, uh, European specs, not American vehicles, that government will collapse. That government will collapse. An example, yeah, in the Aba, I mean, and I have said this severaly. When I assumed office, if on a cost to do facility management, to clean offices and so on and so forth, was a hundred and thirty-seven million every month. We've cut that and cut it and cut it and cut it and cut it and cut it. Finally, where we are now, is that Anambra State Government spends eleven million naira every month to clean the offices. E biakute governor, ma government, eh siye ye go, siye ye go tega, tax ifa to give you, e manaya me me? Mane biakse ka ipo ma ke tu agesi control that erosion, ma tu agesi menka, manka agemeba. That's what keeps us awake. We're not going to take the money I collected from nde nanya ke kenapeb, to get to eje ba, wale ebba, eje ba kalokalo. No. We must account for every penny that is put in our pounds. And with us there, we ask you, trust us with your penny. And if we misuse it, hold us to account. If we misuse it, hold us to account. That is the message ayinono. But onyo obu na owo longo agalo. What are you doing yourself? What are you doing yourself? To turn the story, to change the narrative by... Omo ro nyamfo le penny? Or, or chi do dinkalo? Prof so dinkalo, eh? Oh, yeah, eh? I can see what I know. Oh, Prof, thank you very much, thank you for coming. Ema, when we are talking about law, security and order, uh, uh, se- uh, security, law and order. You know that as part of the response to the massive insecurity everywhere, in the southeast and Anambra particularly, we set up this through Justice and Peace Commission, which Prof so, uh, Odinkalo has graciously agreed to cheer, and that commission is doing an amazing job. Is doing an amazing job. Um, I think, um, the, uh, one of our recommendations, which I've already, we've already started implementing, I think I saw a memo from the Attorney General, about if I need now to equip the office and so on and so forth, what they recommended for us to establish bureau of missing persons. Maybe in that, in that bureau, the list will be quite long. Including Abba Simalo, my co-contestant, as governorship candidate, who is just missing. And then we go to a point, onya, and, oh, me isile, obolo just, you get on to do your thing, nobody cares, and that's gone. No. We will now care, and we will never forget, and we will never forget. So thank you very much, Prof, uh, for the work that you are doing. There have been having public hearings and so on, and many things coming off from different communities, and so on and so forth. I want to say to you, dear friends, thank you for coming once more. To my brothers, I want to end with my brothers, um, whom I boni ne. That's in his typical way, you know, commandeered out here. I appreciate the comments that you made, I'm sure we are going to open the floor to the others. I deeply appreciate you all. Um, ebo be chukuzo, my own senator. Aha, senator kem. Aha, ema, I am very excited, what you said, everybody says, ah, genam, senator ka, ona, adiko owo levi, ono, owo lo, no owo lo, even is here. He is my senator, mu abolo governor. We need to work together to make the place to work. We need to work together. Ogo obunatalo, uh, street lights. I think that was, uh, was that December or January, thereabout, ona ge flag ya off, na newi. Ome me invite to come and flag them off. Ana, onya etemewe ba, onya etenke ba, asimba, ne me je, ai, mokano, uh, opposition party, opposition, opposition party. Ni je, obolo ne ne me indos, na eman kam, so be gone. And I'm coming back to say, I, I mean, I don't just say it, I live by it. Omo madama, um, abu berampa, omo lo de politician, ma chorebo. Politician, unke ne, who five size of the mouth. You know, I say it as it is, and for me, what you see is what you get. I told them, I've told you here now, no football came where, and that ball project, Anambra. And that irrespective of political party, irrespective of anything, once he ne, when I touch something to Anambra, call me, I will come. Obolu kaya biya bulu na abuja, ayahaya moto, biya bulie. Me ya bulu zye, enke e bunata, bunati onoi, se no, ono na, ono na party enke, moro na party enke. Even no toto was here, akane, hey, oga you go, is here, biya mokem line, na mota me je ba. And I was there, and commanded him, and encouraged others to do like him. Ebo be chukuzo. That is my own brand of politics. That is my own brand of politics, is project Anambra. Project Anambra, that's nothing, but if I have a vehicle, it will be ba. Thank you very much. Oze, ohamadike, uh, ka ohamadiken kem, asemi ya no, um, omwe goesi me, biya, ome biya biya, ayanrom, uh, omero, otrafi ke tra me overtake. Eh? So. Ah, ah, ba, ba ne, chere, I chere na, otrafi ka, ome overtake ke bene. Mano abu me ebba, sia, omo eba se mune afon, sia, no, uh, oga ne me campaign, sia, no, eme sia, amam, ay ma nyalalo, ma kenale ne? Uh, nanka ebba, oje feri ba o, omo eka ne me, ema, omo eki ne, je je, moto yimwe ko me, ko kose, ose ke abaje lugu de ebba, fetu o motozo, oba gozo, se drive ya, bugote zye, moti ye bene. Moto ya, aja lugu ge ya fa, ba iwa na moto ya. Eh? Eh, no even nebu, eh, no ya, ema, adema, adema no, akane me campaign omba, ne, eme sia, iwalo, eh, anata vazie, anatawa, 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 anatawa.